Members of the City Council, please attend a call meeting of the City Council to be held in the 6th floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, January 14, 2014, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting by order of the Mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Rowe?
We have three items tonight. We're going to rearrange the batting order and take, actually, it's a late item, and that's a briefing on the Charlestown matter, and that's going to be followed by the report on the toll impact, and lastly, we'll do Sherry's video, which will be brief. It'll run about three minutes.
Okay.
Back last month, I can actually say last year, I sent you this letter that's before you, describing a situation that is similar to a situation that happened 10 years ago, and it relates to what is now the Charlestown condominiums. We have a situation where this is a multifamily housing development that prior to 2005 were apartments. At 2005, roughly, they were converted to condominiums. There are six master water meters that serve the six housing units. You'll see that in the presentation. And since 2009, the water count has never been current. In other words, it's been delinquent. And now it's really delinquent. As I indicated to you in my memorandum of December 29, the city's policy is if you're delinquent and delinquent, and there's no prospect of paying your water bill, then the service is cut off. We have no desire to put people out on this street. We have no desire to take over Charlestown at all. That is not on the agenda. We're going to give you a status report tonight. We told you that we would give notice, and that's what happened today, was it was a notice only, that if the water bill is not paid, and technically, we could have cut off the water on the 10th of January, but we did not, because again, we've got 240 units, roughly 220 families, and we have no desire to put families out on this street. We can't do that. So Fred's going to give you a status report. This presentation, we'll also have Brian Foster find you there. And Fred, will you take over?
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor.
Hey, good evening.
Members of the Council, ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we're here to provide, as Mr. Rowe said, a briefing on the actions dealing with the Charlestown condominium project located on Greenwood Drive, just east of the entrance ramp to the Interstate 64. First, I'd like to just show you, so everybody is familiar, if you're not, these units are the Charlestown Condominium Association. You see a bunch of little red circles around them, and they indicate the individual units are condominiums, and then there is a master large parcel that is owned by the association as well. The stars indicate the approximate location of the water meters on the site. If you were to continue along here, you would actually get back on the interstate, heading east would take you to Victory Boulevard. It's a project that was built in 1977. It has been back and forth for a number of times, and what we would like to do first is have Brian give you some background in the units and where we have been, and how we got to where we're at right now, and then pick that back up and say what the actions are and what we think some possible solutions could be.
Will he touch on his section about who the homeowners association is and at what times they've changed? Okay, very good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Council. As Fred said, this is, of course, gives you some orientation, and like Mr. Rowe indicated, our customer is not the individual units. It's not the individual residents or owners. It's with the Charlestown condo association. And these are, there are six master meters, and they each serve those different pods of condominiums. There's 240 units, and like Mr. Rowe said, and I think there was maybe some misinformation going around the community today, that we were doing this because we wanted to take over the condominium complex, or we wanted to own it. That's not the case. It's likely a matter of, our customer in the utility department is very delinquent on their water bill, and so we have to take action in order to collect payment. And that's really, that's really, in its simplest terms, that's what we're talking about. Prior to converting to condos in 2005, it was an apartment complex. And it's important to note, just again, time of the history, about 10 years ago, when it was an apartment complex, we had this exact same situation take place. So it was a previous owner, not the condo association, but in terms of the situation where they were, had gotten very delinquent in their bills, and we had actually gone through the process that was outlined in the memo that Mr. Rowe sent you back in December, as far as giving notice and having to place condemnation signs. So we started that same process in this instance. However, back about 10 years ago, they were able to satisfy the delinquency, and so in essence, there was not actually any condemnation that took place. They were able to meet the deadline. So again, it's six master meters. It's the condo association that's our customer. They have a private management company, United Property Associates. They're a property management firm. They seem to be a fairly large one in the region and do management services for a variety of other properties. That is where the bills are mailed, and that is who pays the bills on behalf of the condo association. And since 2009, to varying degrees, they've never been current. In essence, they've never gotten to a zero balance. So when you pay your bill, if you get a bill, it's $100, you pay your $100, then your account goes to zero. Thus, we're talking about a zero balance, and that means it's current on your bill. Prior to 2009, there were large stretches of time where they weren't in current balance, and they were delinquent to some degree. But the problem has gotten progressively and progressively worse. So just recap some recent history. Really, this issue, in its current form, has basically started about two years ago, the end of 2011. We placed a lien on the property for unpaid bills totaling the $51,703. And there was, if you recall, I think Mr. Rowe put that with your memo, there was some media coverage at that time. We were not taking action at that time as far as to turn the water off, just like we would in other similarly situated circumstances. We can place a lien on the property for unpaid water bill, just like you can do a tax lien. It works in very much the same fashion. That lien was released in August of 2013, but a new lien was placed. And so there's currently a lien on that property in the amount of $44,000. Back in the February 12, we, again, because we deal with the property management company, UPA, we contacted them about making a payment arrangement. They came in and did that. And we do that for customers. It's not, we try to work with our customers, whether it's the single-family homeowner, or the business customer, whatever. If there are extenuating circumstances, we try and work with them. We do extensions. We'll do payment arrangements. But the bottom line is, we want them to get the bill paid in a timely fashion. We try our best to work with them. Shutting somebody's water off for non-payment is really the last thing that we want to do. So we did a payment arrangement. They sign those. Customers, we make them sign, and they get coupons, sort of spells out when, how much they have to pay, and then they have to pay it. And their balances began to decrease. But by November, they'd fallen behind, so we canceled the plan. We did a new one. So now we're on the second payment plan that they've signed and gone forward.
When was that second plan?
In November of 12.
Okay.
So, excuse me, I went too fast. So in November of 12, we started in February. By November, they were behind. They were starting to catch up, but then they got behind again, and the delinquent balances were increasing. So we canceled that one from February, and we did a new one. By June of this, of last year, 2013, again, they had gotten behind, and we contacted them, informed, them being the property management company, UPA, because again, that's where the bills go, and that's who pays the bills on behalf of the condo association. We informed them, they had to keep their bills current, get them current, and that we would not do any additional payment plans. They needed to get themselves square with, because we'd done two by that point. So between July and October, we were still receiving some payments, but again, they were behind. We gave them a couple of extensions to try to get them where they needed to be and get their accounts current, and they failed to do so.
Brian, when you say receiving some payments, order magnitude, 10%, 20% of what the balance is?
We, they would pay a few thousand dollars at a time. So their bill, again, it's six accounts. When you add them together, they run anywhere, depending on time of year and usage, they might run anywhere from, say, collectively, $8,000 to $12,000, depending on, again, usage, time of year. And so we might get $5,000, $6,000, $7,000, and they would be applied to the various accounts. In essence, they're about four to five months behind. They're basically considered, even though it's residential, they're considered like a business customer. And like, and a lot of our business customers, we actually bill monthly. Most residential customers, all of you that would own a single-family home, we bill bimonthly. But we do have a few hundred accounts. These folks being one of them are larger accounts, where we actually bill monthly. So they get a bill every month, and that's, in order of magnitude, that's about what it runs. And so, again, by October, and we've done extensions, we've tried to get them current, and again, they're behind. So we discussed it, and I brought it to the attention of Mr. Rowe, as far as what we needed to do, and that's when we wanted to make you aware of the circumstances and sort of the plan of action that we needed to take, because we've gone, you know, at this point, in that recent history, almost two years, trying to work with them, multiple payment arrangements, multiple extensions, and we can't get them current. And so, Mr. Rowe sent you this memo with that information at the end of December, again, letting you know that we were going to require them to make payment by January the 10th, which was this past Friday, and that if the payment wasn't received, we were going to start that notification process, which occurred today, and that by February the 10th, we'd give them 30 days to make the payment before we turn the water off. And so that was so that all of the residents and individual unit owners would be aware of the situation, and we'd bring it to their attention. So, yes, Mr. Moody?
Who's the customer?
The customer is the Charlestown Condominium Association.
Okay. And who's responsible for the bill?
Condominium Association, ultimately.
Who are the principals in the association?
I don't have that information, as far as the...
I think that's an important piece of information.
That's right.
Do we?
Fred, do you have that?
Typically, you know, a condo association often has a board of directors made up of the people who live in the condo development. And let us try to get that list of people who's on that board. But the, remember what this was. This was an apartment complex, and I assume in 2005, the owner decided to convert it to condo. And when it converted to condo, it kept the master meters, instead of every single unit having one meter. There are six meters there.
I understand. Cavalier Development Partners, is that, are they still a factor?
Yes.
I know at one time, they own 63 of those units.
Well, let me put this in context.
And what I'm getting at here is, you know, the residents are at, these folks mercy. They depend on them doing the right thing. And obviously, the right thing hasn't been done. And UPA is just in between here. The money goes to them, but if somebody's not handing them the money on behalf of the residents, there's a problem. So I would think us not knowing who the principals are in these, in this structure, this corporate structure, they're the people that we need to have in this room to find out what they're doing with the money.
Let me put it in context again. The 240 units, 75% of the units are leased. And I don't know what the breakdown in ownership of those, at 75% of 240. As part of a condo fee, that condo fee includes payment for water. Now, I can't tell you, because I don't know the transaction between the condo association and the person that lives in the condo unit, whether that's an owner or tenant, whether or not the condo fee is being paid. And I understand your point, and it's a good one. Understand completely. And again, we're trying to work out a good outcome here. And I think that we have been really gracious in trying to find a solution that will work. And Fred and Brian are going to tell you of what our efforts are to bring about a good outcome, where people can stay in the home and the bill gets paid.
I'm all for that, but not knowing who the principals are, you won't get paid.
That's right.
Well, I don't think that the individuals have a liability.
Let's let him finish what he's doing there, and then we'll get around. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. As we've indicated, there are 240 units, roughly 75% are tenant-occupied, as we've learned. There are about 72 that we've been told that refuse to pay their condo fees, somewhere in that neighborhood. About 20 of the units are vacant at this time. Now, when we began the process, as we indicated, that was outlined in the late December letter, the first step was to, again, notify the management company and the owners, here's your drop-dead date, December 10. If you haven't got it paid by then, then, sorry, then we would go ahead and move with additional action. And what we usually do, as you've heard, is if they haven't paid by Friday on the 10th, Monday on the 13th, staff from Public Utilities would have been at the site, turning the water off. Normal procedure is they then contact the inspector's office, and by state law, since there is not a safe water system at the site, we're required, it's not discretionary, but we are required to condemn the units as being unsafe for habitation. Knowing that, we chose to use some discretion and say, let us go on the 14th, just in case that they got some money in the door, and give the residents warning that this action is pending. Maybe through their efforts, meetings, or community efforts, some other way, at least they would know what is getting ready to happen to them, and maybe could make some type of arrangement. So it's not, we're knocking at the door saying, you've got to leave right now. That was the purpose behind today's notice. It was interesting that on the 10th, we received a copy of a letter from the association that had been sent out. And we were thinking all along, this is water, water, water. No, it's water. It's HRSD, it's Dominion Power, it's insurance, it's a lot of money that is outstanding. And the confidence that we had then of a payment sort of went to rock bottom. Therefore, today, the inspectors went, and we felt like, instead of waiting on the mail, if we mailed it today, it was a good chance they would get it Friday, when we would be on holiday leave, and Monday too, and then nobody to talk to. So we chose to go and tape the notices to the doors to give as much notice as we could possibly do. It's important that we understand, we're trying to, I guess you'd say, be as transparent, or trying to give as much notice as possible of what we consider an extremely major event. To have 220 families, not people, but families, all of a sudden homeless, is a big deal. Portsmouth, I don't think, could handle absorbing that at one time. And so we wanted to try and work as much as possible. Gave a very clear letter to the individual, saying, hey, here's what we've got to do. If you don't have it taken care of, we would have to be, as the code says, condemning the unit. Now, I don't want to do that. It's not really the right thing to do. So we've spent some long hours trying to figure out what our next steps are. We have met, I've got the president of the condo association, met with her just a few minutes ago. We are meeting tomorrow afternoon. She has a couple of plans that she would like for us to start considering. And so what we have said is that if we can meet during the week of the 21st through the 24th, they start working up a plan, then the week of the 27th through the 31st, bring that plan in that's reasonable. You know, we can't say, we'll take payment in 42 years. But if we can get a plan that is reasonable, and performs and provides a permanent solution, we're willing to work with that as well. You know, it may be that they need to address these people that are not paying, and so they can get the money flowing. Once they get the money flowing, then they can start paying off the fees that they have. And once that's done, we move towards a situation where we don't go through this as we have been going through it. If for some reason they fail to act, though, we don't see any way of doing something other than the condemnation. The bill is continuing to accrue. As you heard Brian say, anywhere from $8,000 to $12,000 a month. So we're willing to take the risk right now for a couple more months to try and work it out and get the plan working. But we feel like that if they come in with a plan that's reasonable, and it works, and they start working it, we're on the road to a solution. However, if they stop, then we would be back here again. But we feel like that there's enough push that should make this thing work. The staff is interested, and the residents are interested. You're looking at, like I said, a facility that has a lot of seniors. You have individuals that have just returned home from the hospital. You have babies. You have, I've got a cross-section. You have actually coworkers living there. So we're trying to find every way we can to prevent this from happening, and with the work and help from the association, we feel we'll maybe be able to reach that.
Well, that's a good idea. But what is the likelihood of getting the association, as well as the tenants, or the board, as well as the principals, all together, to make sure we're all on the same page? So if there's pressure that does need to be applied from the residents, they understand fully what's going on, and not thinking that it's something that we're doing. A lot of this is communication, and, you know, and if we can get our arms around that piece, and hopefully get some collaborations from all the parties, and keep everybody honest, we can, and they'll respect what we're trying to do, and at the same time, we're doing the same for them.
Mayor, we've spent today engaged in trying to find a solution. One of the points of that solution is communication.
Fred, but it's not just today. We've spent a long time trying to find the solution, and we're going to, we're committed to that.
Okay.
But is that a point where you need to be aware of it? It seems to be...
And so do all the residents.
Right. And it came to a brink 10 years ago. Same scenario. You go back and you look at the news media reports. Just change the date. The fact then was that it was a apartment complex. Today, it's a condo complex, and we want to find a solution. And I'm willing to kick the can down the road, but ultimately, we've got to start kicking the can.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Moody.
I'll defer to the Vice Mayor. I'll come back with my own mayor.
I was just going to say, you know, we need a solution for right now, and we need a long-term solution, so we're not, we're not back here two, three years from now. But we've got to find something, because we can't allow 240 families to be put out in the street in the middle of, near the winter. We can't sit here and let that happen. So you're going to tell me something tonight?
No.
So what's the solution that Fred's talking about then?
The solution lies in the next 30 days. The solution, we're in a paradox, where we need to keep the pressure on about the water being cut off. That's the most effective way, for our 30,000 water customers, is the threat of the utility being cut off. They're behind in our utility, they're behind in Hampton Road Sanitation District.
But this is my, those principals, I don't know where they live. It looked like when I lived in Virginia Beach, their water's not going to be cut off. The people live out there. So we need, to my colleague's point, we need to get to those principals as well, and make sure, make sure they understand. What leverage do we have with the principal? I know, I know you say the bills go to UPI.
UPI, yes.
UPI.
Who are the principals, George? You said you got that?
So are we going to get to the principals to have a conversation with them?
Yes.
Because that's who we need to be talking to, because these people are being held, you know, by the principals.
Mr. Moody, and then Ms. Randall.
You know, a six ounce, a six ounce, on the six-month payout plan, that's going to be just a shade under $14,000 a month, going, I mean, the $8,000 a month on top of the $34,000. But my question, too, is the Hampton Road Sanitation District, what, are they going to work with us on a similar situation?
I've already spoken with them, the last two days, and I've worked it out with the HRSD. There, the association is delinquent to HRSD for $9,916 as of today. And so I've worked it out with their director, that we're going to basically try and roll theirs in with ours, because they have, HRSD has the authority to turn off their water service for nonpayment. And so what we don't want to do is, we work on our issue, and we don't cut them off, but then, a week later, or a month later, here comes HRSD doing the same type of collection. So I have spoken with them, and we have it worked out. So when we, when we meet with them to try and work out the solution, we're going to, we're going to basically combine and work on both of them.
How about Dominion Power?
What about Dominion Power and the gas and all of that? Do we even know any of that?
The Dominion Power, as we found out to date, is a pass-to account of roughly $700, $800, and it's for the exterior or public space lights. It's not for the interior. So that would not be a condemnation issue.
It would really be simple if each unit had a water meter.
Separate meter, right.
Okay.
Let's try to anticipate your question.
Okay.
Got 240 units. Let's say it costs $1,000. You've got the cost of the meter, you've got the cost of the labor. You're in the six figures, if it's a $1,000 cost to put the meter in the meter box in. Now, remember that we're responsible up to the meter box. So right now, that's an interior line right there. If we start putting meters at each doorstep, we own those lines. We have no idea what condition those lines are, that are on private property, that are private lines, that have been private lines since the inception of this development. So expand that six-figure number. You could be approaching maybe a seven-figure number. And we've talked about that. I mean, that would be the coolest and the simplest way to do it. If you live in the condo, you get a water bill. But that's beyond the economic reach.
Ms. Randall?
As a resident of the area, and I was there when it was designed and put in place, they have gone through several dilemmas. And we've been always able to sit down and talk and discuss and work out a plan of action between the condominium association and the residents, because this is a family out in that community. the residents, because this is a family out in that community. And they have worked hard trying to bring things together. Yes, some of them have, but all of them are being penalized as a result of what happened with the board of directors, who was supposed to be filtering the information through, there are a lot of children out there, two as well, who are feeling the impact of what is going on. And I think there should be some way that we can come to some resolve. I had spoken to you about it, because I said, whatever it takes to get, this is a community that's very much concerned about what's happening to the residents around, and also to the children that are in that community. There should be some way that we can sit down and work through the plan. I'm late coming in, because I've been talking with, with some of the people out. I'm appalled that we could get to this point without some communication being made, but this is not the first time, Ms. Rowe, that this has come about. It's been something else that came about in the result, and I guess I'm an old lady and I remember some things. But I think what we, we need to do is to sit down and come up with a plan of action, because those seniors who have been in there all the time, they don't have any place else to go.
That's our goal.
And I will not see them go into wilderness.
Dr. Edmonds.
Well, first of all, I think it was just startling for the residents to get that notice, and certainly they'd be upset, I would too, I was upset to find out. But at the same token, you said you took out a lien on the, on the, what does that, what does that mean?
Well, it's a lien on the property that gets satisfied if the property's ever sold, and the liens are paid off. It's just like a tax lien or a mechanic's lien against the property. It sits there until the lien is either satisfied by the payment, and we can remove it, or the property is sold.
So it still doesn't help the residents in their situation?
Not at all.
And it doesn't help your utility system.
Doesn't help at all.
You know, we all wear multiple hats, but in this case, we're wearing the municipal corporation hat. You're the board of directors for a municipal corporation and a water system. But we also have a compassionate community hat, and I understand that, and we get it. And I can't underline, italicize, and put bold enough that we're not, we do not want to put people on the street, not their family.
One last comment. We need to be very aggressive then, to get the persons who are supposed, the residents thinking that their money is being paid, and all the things that need to be paid out of what they're giving, what is it, UPA? That all these bills are being taken care of. So we need to be aggressive with them, and hold them very much accountable.
Come together.
Well, I think if we go with your plan, and again, try to get everybody together so there is no gaps there, that, and see if we can't come up with some resolution. I appreciate the fact of what you've been trying to do, and I guess make it aware to everybody the problems that we have here, but again...
And as much as we would like to get a permanent solution, I'm not going to guarantee that, guys, because it may be something that we cannot deliver.
I understand.
But it goes back to the principals, not UPA.
Right, I was going to say, get everybody in the room, we need the principals for sure, because...
We would like to, you know, one of the things that we focused on each time we've had this has been getting the money, getting the money, and getting the money. That's why we put number two in, provide cutoff valves. Now, as Mr. Rowe indicated, putting in the meters may cost a lot of money, but putting in a cutoff valve that would allow the association the ability to turn off the water on those people that are not paying their condo fees would be a way to direct, directly to the individuals that may be causing the problem. So we would like to go past just getting the money, that's why we said a permanent solution, to find a way that they can control the ones that are not doing what they're supposed to do.
Now, would those valves be freed on private property or on city property?
Private property.
On private property to put those cutoff valves in?
They have installed some already, and have already started turning them off, and contacting us and saying, hey, we've turned the water off to this unit because of non-payment, and we have actually gone out a couple of times to those units when we've been notified, and condemned those. But like I said, we don't have that option on every unit.
And let me emphasize the fact, the person turning that valve would not be a city person, it would be a person from the condo association.
Okay. All right. Okay, anything else there?
Good.
Okay, thank you.
And we're going to keep you...
Absolutely.
...informed. Please read the material.
Thank you.
Okay, our next is the briefing on the tolls, and Brandon.
Let's take a quick break if we could, and allow folks to leave that's here just for the association, so we can get the other folks in. Yeah, we've got some other folks waiting to come out there. Thank y'all for coming.
Hey, sir. How you doing? We're in the industry. We're in the industry. If I knew this, I would...
We have to go on our own. We don't need to take home.
That's just crazy, but it'd be nice to...
And it's no fault of them. The future of the economy is to give it to the end of the year. The association is...
It's been a four-month...
You don't want to go there. Yeah, you don't want to go there.
Mac and cheese!
All right.
You have one thing down here.
These are, these are...
George.
We all know that we have to save the best for the good asking, and then we...
Yeah, whenever you get all...
I told him I'd be taking him back, I'm going to put him inside. We go, we'll get him.
Sir, we have a seat over here. We need everybody.
There's one over there.
We're trying to get somewhere, but I'm going to stay.
All right, sir, ready?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, Brandon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. So that Dr. Cook can make the most of your valuable time, I will not recite his curriculum veto, but I think most of you know Dr. Cook. He is uniquely qualified to do this analysis, and that's why it was a pretty easy choice to find him, to ask him to do this, a little over 30 days ago. But for those of you that don't know, Dr. Cook is the professor emeritus at Old Dominion, also a professor of economics. He's done that role since 2001. Prior to that, he was the president of Old Dominion, and also professor of economics. Prior to that, he was the president and professor of economics at University of Montana, and has been in economics and higher education since 1967. So there is no more well-qualified economist in this region, and certainly beyond that, to do this analysis. And so again, that's why we asked him to do it, and so he is going to present his findings and his report on the disparate impact of tolls on Portsmouth, and this is his PowerPoint, and you have this handout. Dr. Cook, take it away.
Thank you, Brian. You're making me sound old, though, I'll just say that. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Mr. City Manager, it's really a delight to be back amongst you, this time with kind of a hot topic, I guess, but this has been, you know, sort of a high-velocity project, very quick, but a very interesting one, and I'll just say, I learned quite a bit as I was going through this. But there are really three basic conclusions I have. One is something that I think probably you already sensed was true, and that is that Portsmouth is more sensitive to these tolls than any other city in the region. In a moment, I'll show you at least one measure of that. And second, that at least in the short run, over the next couple of years, the costs that are attached to the tolls probably are going to exceed the benefits from these projects. There really are benefits out there, it's just that they're spread over time, and of course, they'll be spread amongst the cities of the region. That, third point is an important one. First of all, there are the individuals who have to pay the tolls, but beyond that, there are some important restaurants and businesses who have a clientele that comes from other places on Portsmouth, and they really stand possibly to get hurt here, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. I didn't really do a benefit-cost analysis. This is the sort of thing that would take a long period of time and lots of data, but nonetheless, if you use readily available data, especially data showing where people live and where they work, you'll get a pretty good notion of what the effect's going to be. So really, the place to start is to look at where people live and where they work. And this is tricky, hard to read, so let me give you a little bit of help here. Let's look at the yellow Portsmouth line right here, and let's go across, let's say, to the city of Chesapeake. What that says is that the city of Chesapeake is sending 11,722 workers into Portsmouth on a daily basis, that's the average, okay? And if you go down the column Portsmouth, and you go again to Port, to Chesapeake, you'll see that Portsmouth is only sending 9,498 workers into Chesapeake. So there are more people from Chesapeake coming into Portsmouth to work than vice versa. However, if you looked at Norfolk, the relationship is different. Norfolk is getting more workers from Portsmouth than Portsmouth is getting from Norfolk. But this is pretty interesting as a table, because it shows how highly interdependent the region is. People live one place, they work another, and therefore, if we toll up the entire region, not just the two Elizabeth River tunnels, but were we to toll up the James River crossings as well, there is a danger that we would essentially separate the region into three: Eastern Hampton Roads, Western Hampton Roads, and the peninsula. So that's something that I think we need to worry a little bit about, but this is a table that I think you ought to look at a little bit more, and, because it has a lot of really good data. But let's look at the cities that are most obviously affected by the project. First of all, if you look at Norfolk, Norfolk is receiving 10,249 workers from Portsmouth, whereas Norfolk's sending 6,044 workers into Portsmouth, okay? Virginia Beach is getting 6,925 workers from Portsmouth, it's sending 8,466 into Portsmouth. Now, it's this yellow line that's really important, because what that says is that there are about 31,000-plus people, these are individuals, not vehicles, individuals who are going back and forth across the Elizabeth River from those two cities into Portsmouth, or from Portsmouth into those cities. Those are the people, then, that are most likely to end up paying tolls, because they've got to get to work, okay? Well, in addition to those people, there are lots of people going in and out of Portsmouth from other locations, the rest of the cities in the region, really, you know, places like Newport News, and Suffolk, and Hampton, and so forth, and there are 18,000-plus individuals like that. But they're probably not going to pay any of the tolls. They'd have a pretty unusual driving pattern if they end up paying tolls, because there's another way for them to get there. And the James River crossings, of course, aren't tolls. So only in rare instances would those 18,000 people pay the tolls. So there are these 31,000 people who are going in and out, and they're the people who are going to pay the tolls, but it's really 31,000 times two, because they've got to go back and forth, so they're going to pay the tolls twice, okay? Now, how big is this? Well, one measure of the size of an economy is how many jobs you have, and this 31,000 is 51.7% of Portsmouth's job base. And so it's sort of an interesting thing to look at that percentage and say, well, what is that percentage for the other cities? How much does it affect them? Well, if we index Virginia Beach at 1, Norfolk is at 1.39, meaning it's a little bit more affected than Virginia Beach, and then you go to Suffolk, because they have people that are going to have to go through the tunnels, and then you look at Portsmouth. Portsmouth is clearly the outlier, it's much more centered to the tolls than anybody else. And I want to underline, this is a relative measure, because what I'm measuring is how many people have to go back and forth as a percentage of the job base. One of the reasons that Norfolk's index is so low is they have a decent number of people going back and forth, but they have a much larger job base. So the impact on the city of Norfolk simply isn't as high, because not as great a percentage of their workforce is going to be affected. And of course, the same thing is true with Virginia Beach. And if you go back to that commuting matrix, and let me do that, you'll see the number of jobs in each city right here. So the city of Portsmouth has 61,237 jobs located in the city. And, yeah, Virginia Beach is going to be affected, but they have 229,000 jobs, so the relative impact on the city of Virginia Beach is simply less, okay? Now, let's talk a little bit about the tolls. I think you're by now pretty well aware of what these tolls are. Maybe the governor will do something about that tomorrow, but this is the way things are right now, okay? The Elizabeth River Companies Agreement allows it to increase tolls at 3.5% annually, or the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, for the trailing 12 months, if the CPI is higher. But let's assume that it only goes up 3.5% a year, okay? Then in 2070, when the agreement runs out, the non-peak time toll is going to be $10.19, and the passenger peak time toll will be $11.79, and then you can see what they will be for trucks. In other words, those are going to go up pretty substantially. But let's go back to that agreement, it's 3.5 or the CPI, okay? What if the tolls go up more than 3.5%? Well, I said, look, let's go back and look at the past 58 years, and see how many years the CPI went up more than 3.5%? And the answer is 24 years. Well, let's suppose the next 58 years is just like that. Let's suppose the CPI goes up higher than 3.5% 24 years out of the next 58, in other words, till 2070. Well, then, instead of the passenger going up to $11.79, it's going to go up to $21.56. This is one of the miracles of compound interest.
Yes.
Because tolls then will actually grow at 4.66% if they match the past 50 or 60 years. And you'd have to guess, that something like that probably is going to be true, okay? So if we're looking at truck tolls, rather than going up to 47.17, they're going to go up to 86.24 if we have 3.5% or the CPI. And that's what the agreement is. So 86.24 is probably pretty close to what you would see in 2070 for a truck under the peak time circumstance. The effect on the Elizabeth River Companies' toll revenues is that they'll go up 82% if, again, it's 3.5% or the CPI. So it makes a big difference in terms of the revenue they receive. Maybe that didn't look like a significant provision of the agreement, but it really is, as you can see, because it makes, well, not 100% increase, but a considerable increase. Okay, now, let's look at sort of the ability to pay issue. I make up sort of a hypothetical person here, who's working 250 days a year, so they're making 500 tunnel trips, and they have to pay $1.84, and they make four other trips during the month that are off-peak time. Well, you add all this together, and they're going to end up paying almost $1,000, that's $996 plus. That's the annual... So if we're looking at truck tolls, rather than going up to 47.17, they're going to go up to 86.24 if we have 3.5% or the CPI. And that's what the agreement is. So 86.24 is probably pretty close to what you would see in 2070 for a truck under the peak time circumstance. The effect on the Elizabeth River Company's toll revenues is that they'll go up 82% if, again, it's 3.5% or the CPI. So it makes a big difference in terms of the revenue they receive. Maybe that didn't look like a significant provision of the agreement, but it really is, as you can see, because it makes, well, not 100% increase, but a considerable increase. Okay, now, let's look at sort of the ability to pay issue. I make up sort of a hypothetical person here, who's working 250 days a year, so they're making 500 tunnel trips, and they have to pay $1.84, and they make four other trips during the month that are off-peak time. Well, you add all this together, and they're going to end up paying almost $1,000, that's $996-plus. That's the annual impact. Well, how will this affect somebody from Portsmouth? Well, if you look at that right-hand column, you see that tolls as a percentage of median household income in Portsmouth would be 2.15%. Now Norfolk's a little bit higher, because median household income there is a little bit lower, but again, Norfolk doesn't have as many workers affected as a proportion. So if you look at Portsmouth compared to, let's say, Virginia Beach, or the Commonwealth of Virginia, once again, Portsmouth is more sensitive, it has more households who are likely to get stung and hurt by this particular toll arrangement. Now, this particular table will take a little bit of time to explain, but it really focuses on discretionary drivers, the people who don't have to necessarily go through the tunnel, who could say, "I'm staying home, or I'll go a much longer route." Every day, an average of about 125,000 people go through the tunnel, and that's an average over the entire week, that takes account of Saturdays and Sundays as well. There aren't as many people on Saturdays and Sundays, but it's only down 25 or 30% typically. Now, these people, we know, are commuting back and forth. Remember, I showed you that table saying, "These are the people going back from Virginia Beach and Norfolk to Portsmouth and vice versa"? Well, that's how many people for the downtown tunnel and the midtown tunnel. And then, I actually had some people sit at the mouths of the tunnel and count vehicles. And we looked at, well, how many semis are going through, how many trucks, or panel trucks that have a business insignia on the side and so forth, and so there are a decent number of people who are going through for business trips. And if you've ever gone down, as I do frequently, Hampton Boulevard in Norfolk, you know that so. All you have to do is look around, and you can see that there's a healthy number. But there are lots of people out here who are going through the tunnel who are what I'll call discretionary people. They're shopping, they're going to church, they're going back and forth to the airport, they're visiting friends, they're passing through, there are all these kinds of things. And these are the people who are most likely to say, "I'm not going to go through the tunnel, or I'm going to try to find a different way to do things." So those people might really make a difference, because they really do have a degree of discretion. Now, Steer Davies and Gleave did one of the studies of the economic impact of the tolls, and they talked about a possible shock effect. When tolls go into effect, let's say, February 1st, that there might be as much as a 24% to 48% decline in total vehicle traffic through the tunnels. And that's possible, but I'm inclined to think that's probably a high-end estimate. It won't be high-end, though, if it turns out there are lots of EZ Pass problems, and people end up having to pay triple because they don't have an EZ Pass, and that, incidentally, is another aspect of Portsmouth's problem, because some people don't have the credit card to go and get the EZ Pass the easy way. So that's part of the problem. But anyway, this is a little bit of sort of Jim Cook economics. If a trip adds 30 minutes, and your time is valued at $10 an hour, actually, the previous study valued the time at more than that, then that 30 minutes is worth $5 to you. And if you only have to pay $1.84 as a toll, after the shock, after a period of time, most people are going to end up paying that. They're going to say, "I don't like it, but I don't want that half-an-hour delay," and then another half-an-hour maybe coming back. So initially, there is going to be a shock effect, but ultimately, I'm saying, at this level of tolls, probably vehicle traffic is going to recover rather substantially. But these people down here, the restaurants and businesses that have a regional clientele, they're a little bit different, and I want to explain why.
That's the discretionary folks that you're referring to.
That's right.
They're dealing with these discretionary travelers. Now, let me confess that I patronize a lot of downtown, old-town restaurants. The Beer Garden's my favorite, by the way, I'll confess that. But the effect of the toll is as if you go into the Beer Garden, or to Brute's, and it's like a 5% or 10% tax that you have to pay if you go in there, but if you went to a restaurant that had a local clientele, those people aren't paying because they're not going through the tunnel. So any business in Portsmouth that has people that go through the tunnel and are discretionary stands to get hurt. Now, here's another little bit of economic terminology, but this business of price elasticity basically gets down to, how much do you and I react when somebody raises the price? And if you take something like your utility bill, which you've just talked about, people tend to pay their utility bills, for the most part, there's not a big reaction, but restaurants are different. A lot of discretionary businesses are different, and so you get a 10% increase in meal prices, which effectively, that's what the toll is, we're going to get a decline in patronage. So those are the people who are most likely to feel that, and the impact of that is also going to be felt by the city. You're going to collect your tax revenues. I can't predict that ahead of time until we sort of see what the size of the shock effect is, but think of it this way: every 1% decline in your taxable sales costs you about $6 million. And you'd have to say, based upon what we've seen thus far, you'd predict at least a 1% decline in taxable sales. And the same thing, we could talk about assessed valuations. If a business isn't making as much money, the business is worth less, the property is worth less, and so ultimately, assessed valuations stagnate, or they go down, and each 1% costs you about $900,000 there. Now, let me go back and sort of take a long-run view. There really are benefits attached to these projects: reduced travel times, more reliability, lower vehicle operation costs, maybe reduced admissions. And, you know, the Commonwealth paid for three or four different studies, and some of the people working on it, that really demonstrate these benefits are out there. The problem is, these benefits are spread over the entire area, and so are the costs, but Portsmouth is getting an especially large chunk of the cost. You're especially sensitive to that, and the kinds of things that I've showed you, I think, demonstrate that that's so. If we could construct a separate benefit-cost ratio for every city in the region, which, as I said, I couldn't really do, but based upon what I've seen, I'm pretty confident that Portsmouth's ratio would be lower than any other city, simply because its costs are that much higher. And the reason is straightforward: Portsmouth is really just going to bear more of the costs. And let's sort of summarize the reasons. Well, proportionately more workers are going to pay the tolls, the tax base is closely connected to these discretionary people, and then finally, Portsmouth has a large number of households that are going to find it difficult to pay these tolls. So I wish I had better news for you, but that's essentially the substance of my report, or I'd be happy to respond to questions.
First of all, sir, let me just say how thrilled we are to have you here, and to be able to take in on this presentation, and kind of listen to the numbers that we've all kind of have said without the actual data, that this is going to impact us disproportionately. And to be able to see that, and the way you laid it out, makes it actually pretty simple for all of us, and this probably isn't a question for you, but it makes me think that the Commonwealth or someone else do this, and know that we're having this impact, this disadvantage. And again, if we're going to promote regionalism, which we all want, and if we're going to benefit as a region and a Commonwealth, then there's got to be a way to take that data to make cities like Portsmouth and Norfolk whole, if the benefit is going to be to a Virginia Beach, or to a Williamsburg, or something like that. And I think one of the things that has baffled all of us is we haven't seen or heard that kind of data, or that kind of rationale, to put us in some kind of comfort zone that that was done. And I think that's one of the reasons why we asked to commission this study, to have you do this, because we hadn't seen that.
Bill?
To your point, Mayor, this study is probably about three or four years too late before the governor inked that agreement. This kind of study should have been done, and it shows a total lack of respect, I think, for the region, certainly for the city of Portsmouth. You know, the governor could have had this study done, and not to have had a study to base that agreement on, establishing the tolls over a 58-year period, is simply mismanagement, bad judgment, all the above. You have formalized what most of us have been thinking, that this is a bad thing, is going to hurt us, and you've put a face on it. Thank you.
Doc, let me just, on the flipside of your data, the state or the Commonwealth continues to say, "There's nothing guaranteed in that contract." Those discretionary folks, if their behavior or traffic patterns change drastically, this could cause this whole deal with ERC to go up in smoke, correct? I mean, they could, if, they've run this mathematical model, and they've run those numbers using the index, as well as the 3.5%, and you showed the 82% differential there, but if these discretionary folks, and I think you showed about 35,000 of them, if they actually changed their patterns, this could bankrupt. Well, I hate to say bankrupt, but...
The Elizabeth River Company is allowed to earn up to 13.5% on their investment.
Yes, sir.
But that's not guaranteed. If they don't get up to that level, then sort of the question is, well, how would they try to adjust to that? Would they raise tolls aggressively? Would the quality of service decline? That's sort of an interesting question. They could even go bankrupt, I suppose, in the worst of all circumstances, but I don't know the answer to that, but the large number of discretionary travelers there suggests that they should be pretty careful. Now, one of my recommendations to you in the report to think about was to try to convince ERCO to have more than two toll time periods. If you sort of look at the literature, maybe three or four different tolling time periods with different tolls, especially low tolls in times when you know discretionary people are going to go through, for example, to go to church.
Yeah.
And it sort of boils down to, if you lower tolls, you're going to get a little bit less revenue from that, but will the increase in patronage be large enough to make everybody better off? And literally, to sort of give you a number, if you decrease tolls by, let's say, 20%, you have to have at least 20% more travelers to earn the same revenue. So the Elizabeth River Company, if they're going to decrease tolls in some time periods, are going to want to see a really healthy increase in patronage during that time period. But the national evidence is that three or four different tolling time periods is optimal. And so that's something that I think, I'd hope the Commonwealth and you would be talking with them about, Mr. Mayor, because I think it's worth at least an experiment to see how it works, to find out whether people would really take advantage of low tolls at 4:00 in the morning, or whenever it is.
That's interesting, because one of the other burning issues that I had was the clause in there that allowed for them to claim if there's a competing activity, and as you know, as part of the Hampton Roads Training and Planning Organization, Transportation Planning Organization, we're working on other crossings and other things to be able to allow citizens throughout the region to flow more freely. So in essence, we're hoping to decrease the 125,000 going through those tunnels a day, so there isn't as much gridlock. So it appears that we're backing ourselves in a corner, so whatever we do to better that, it's going to allow this contractor to come and file a claim, because he's saying, "I did my model based on X, and now you've just done this." So it just seems like we're in a quagmire.
If there's a third crossing or something like that, that could diminish ERCO's revenues for the downtown and midtown tunnels, and then they can force the Commonwealth to make up the difference. That's the nature of the agreement.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any evidence either within the contract, or maybe nationally, you know, of like a 24-hour commuter toll? I'm thinking about Chesapeake Bay Bridge Tunnel, you know, if you come back in a certain period of time, you pay a different toll on your return, which could clearly be done with the commuter technology.
Yeah, those kinds of things could be done. It really will boil down to, if you do that, what will happen to the Elizabeth River Company's revenues?
Not the way their models go.
You know, one hopes that one sees something from the governor tomorrow that will make or change the situation, but I'm not going to hazard a guess about that. I mean, I've heard all the same rumors you have, but I don't know precisely what's going to happen.
It'll be interesting where ERC comes in on this, the governor's suggestions, at least that have leaked out, the $1.75 off-peak time, whether that's something they would agree to. At this point, they have a deal, a signed deal, so...
The Public Private Partnership Act gave remarkable discretion to the governor and the people in the code departments to negotiate agreements like this, and they negotiated one, and here it is.
Finally, Doc, let me just ask, I've already, actually, on the inauguration, I was talking about this study in Richmond, to the Transportation Secretary, and they are anxiously wanting to get a copy of this, but what would you say if they looked at this and said, "That's baseless"?
Well, I guess I would say to them...
I mean, that's their opinion, but I mean, you know, we hired the best, is that right?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'd point at that commuter matrix and say, "That's where it all starts," and I'd ask them whether they ever did one of those, and I think the answer is no, to show, you know, who's actually going back and forth between the cities, and where they work and where they live, and that's the place to start.
Right.
That's your database.
I don't think, I have to be careful, I don't think that they did a matrix like that.
Well, this kind of feeds into, when we initially met with them three years ago, when I did, we talked about a differential in the toll, because if you had this type of different weights throughout the region, you would think, to be fair to all of the localities, a person here in this city with this much impact wouldn't pay the same as a person that may be in another area that had less impact. And they just kind of stared at me, and which made me think, had they actually done something like this, because from a fairness perspective, I mean, would you, if you're trying to be regional, and you're trying to be able to do all these things, because there are other projects we're going to need to bring here, and tolling is probably going to be some element of that to be able to pay for these projects, is there argument here that if you live in a certain area, a certain jurisdiction, that's having the larger impact, you pay a lesser toll, or, I mean...
There might be that argument, but especially, there's an argument for the mayors and the city managers to look at that matrix and say, "We're all in this together, and so we need to support Portsmouth in its efforts because..."
We could be next.
"...we're all affected by this, because lots of people work in places like Newport News, and commute to Portsmouth, and vice versa, so everybody has a stake in this."
Unfortunately, that effort didn't take place.
It really didn't.
But anyway, again, any other questions? Thank you, sir, very much, we really appreciate that.
Good evening, ma'am.
Wasn't that great?
Absolutely.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Thank Jim Cook.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. I think, I was trying to... I recommend that we take about a three-minute break to let the room...
Clear?
Clear, stand up, stretch, and then we'll come back and we'll do Sherry's presentation. How about that? You might want to, I think Jim stepped out the door, if you want to thank him personally, that would be great.
Okay, let's do that real quick, let's take a three-minute break.
Practicing on another doctor ball that we cut our own nose.
Now you know where I'm coming from.
I think about it.
If you don't like it, we're going to kill the host.
Is it going to be called Chesapeake?
There you go.
I had to get my daughter's learner's permit today, that's why I was late.
Did you? Lord have mercy.
She's hot on it, she's got her learner's.
Oh, praise the Lord, but I got to get you something for the baby, I just said, I'm just so proud of you. I love to see you.
They're growing up, bud, they're growing.
Hey, three months.
That's a warning.
Oh, yeah, that's the only reason I do what I do.
I'm so proud.
Let them know we're ready to get started.
I'm very proud of you.
I remember when my honey and I got stuck, I left nothing but foot in the wound.
Hold on, Sher.
That's a smart young lady.
Yep, I'll see you tomorrow.
I guarantee you, ERC, if you think, they did a performance, they...
They saw that 82% differential in the 3.5%.
That's just something.
This is a good news.
And that's what we took back to their stockholder, we said, look at this honey hole.
I started back running back to Richmond, I heard, I'm on Virginia first, it's some admission test.
That's the mother of all the agreements.
You ready?
Yep.
All right. We have, as we discussed last night, a video that actually is almost 10 minutes long, but not this one. If you want to see the long version, go to our website, it'll be up there soon. This is a preview, you might call it, of, and we'll, we'll make these topics sensitive as the session goes forward, so I'm introducing Sherri Neal to you.
And I'm sure she wouldn't like that photo right now.
Good evening. Mayor Wright, Mayor's and Mayor's Council, Mr. Adams, and I'm doing stuff. This evening, I'm going to provide you with a brief of the activities of the 2014 General Assembly Session, 2,057 bills that have been introduced, and I have selected 394 of those bills possible tracking and have entered them into the city politics system. So far, city staff has identified 22 with having a possible significant negative impact to the city enforcement, and 38 with a possible significant positive impact to the city enforcement. Turning to our legislative package, each of our legislative requests have been submitted and now have bill numbers. The first one in our package was for economic relief for enforcement downtown businesses. The next bill, or the legislative request, was for the Public Private Partnership Act. Our legislative package also included a request, a budget amendment for the church and bridge replacement. Senator Lucas has submitted a budget amendment for $25 million, and Delegate James has submitted one as well. And finally, in our package was the casino gaming fees, which, of course, is being taken by Senator Lucas, it is Senate Bill 19, and that bill has been referred to the Senate Committee on General Law Technology. And before I venture to the next bill, I would like to just pause here for a second to let you know that Delegate James has been assigned to the Commerce and Labor Committee of the House of Delegates, he's from Lawrence, on General Law, so congratulations to Delegate James on his new assignment. These and all bills that we are working on, on behalf of the city of Portsmouth, always confuse support from home. Phone calls, betters, emails, personal visits, all help to show support for the bills that we want and tell us a amount of opposition for those that we do not like. If you have any questions on how to make contact, please feel free to contact me, and I will provide you with that information. So again, thank you for your time and your indulgence, have a good evening.
Good job, Sher.
She gets a lot done, I'm telling you, she's all over that spot.
Again, I point out, we're expecting at least about 3,000 bills, if the average length was five pages, and that's before amendments, there's an awful lot of reading that goes on in this session. You saw an email from me last night on one bill, that looks like the punish Portsmouth bill, and so we have to keep our guard up. We have a need, Mr. Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen, for a closed session.
Okay, all right. Somebody want to take us in the clothes that we got there?
I'm moved to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3711, for the following purposes. Concerning the expansion of an existing business where no previous announcement has been made of the business interest in expansion as permitted under subsection A5, and briefing by staff and consultation of legal counsel concerning the collection of city data under subsection 37.
Second.
Mr. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. Emmes?
Yes.
Mr. Meeks?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Simmons?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Mayor Wright?